We have a second?
Second.
Great. Any objections to approving the minutes hearing, none. The minutes for our last planning and zoning meeting on March 5th are approved. We don't have any public hearings tonight or new business, but we do have unfinished business. For reconsideration, we have resolution PZ 2025-003 granting a conditional use permit for the construction of a 12-unit, two-story multifamily dwelling unit within the commercial district at 400 South Cobuck Street. The motion to approve is on the floor from our February 5th meeting. And at that meeting, since that meeting, Commissioner Smith Ailey, can you please disclose that you have your ownership interest in the property within 300 feet of that subject parcel?
Yes.
All right, thanks. Please state if you believe you can impartially consider the application and briefly state why or why not.
Yes, I can. I have no reason not to. Am I supposed to have a prepared statement? No, I don't see any reason why I would not be able to be impartial.
All right, thanks. If the applicant is here tonight, if you wouldn't mind just coming quickly up and pushing the on button, I think it should work now. I just wanted to make sure that you didn't have any objection to the commissioner joining the...
No, I don't have any objections, so.
Thank you. All right, we can move on now. All right, may we now have the staff report?
Sorry, do you have an argument already? No, you're fine.
Thank you, commissioners, and thank you, Chair Badla. So as noted, this project is a reconsideration, so it was heard on February 5th meeting. And at that meeting, one of our commissioners requested to reconsider. And so tonight's meeting is to discuss the same project, no changes. And again, I want to just provide clarity that this is a conditional use permit. It is not a rezone. What's the difference? The difference is a rezone typically occurs when, within that zoning district, a use is prohibited. Therefore, a developer or property owner then proposes a rezone to a zone that they can do what they would like to do. In this case, that's not, is not the case here. The zoning is commercial, and within the commercial or zoning district, you have permitted uses, which are by right, or you have conditional uses that are allowed if they meet all the standards for a conditional use permit. So that's the project tonight, is a conditional use permit. It's conditionally, maybe conditionally approved if it meets those eight standards. So I just want to be clear, it's a conditional use permit and not a rezone. So with that being said, this particular project is within the commercial corridor. This is the current zoning district map. Everything in yellow is commercial district. Everything that you see in blue is multifamily residential. And then further to the west, you see purple, that's your single-family, two-family zone. With that being said, this is a conditional use permit for the proposal of the project. And my apologies, my screen is not showing the entire title. There we go. Is an apartment building, 12 units, two stories, approximately 12,000 square feet, in a commercial corridor with a building height of approximately 21 and a half feet tall. And this is from the grade to the top, the highest point of the roof. And then the building footprint is approximately a little bit over 6,300 square feet. And furthermore, because it is a multifamily, every dwelling unit requires a minimum of two parking spaces per dwelling unit. And here, being provided is 24 off-street parking spaces, as well as one dedicated accessory parking space, as required by code. And just a little bit further with this, just like any project, typically landscaping is required. And here, your street landscaping is being provided in accordance with our code. As you see off Cobuck, there's approximately 15 square, 15 feet in width. Our code says approximately 6 to 15 feet, but averaging 10 feet in width. And then furthermore, off Fireweed, the applicant is providing approximately 10 feet of the landscaping along the street frontage. And that's really all that's required of the zoning code when it comes to landscaping for this zoning district and the proposed project. So with any conditional use permit, it requires to meet these eight standards. What it means is, can the project meet these eight standards? If not, could it be conditioned to mitigate these standards to be met? So it doesn't necessarily mean just you have to meet it as is presented. If commissioners decide, if there could be conditions placed on it in order to meet a standard, this is where we add conditions of approval. And this is where you see in the resolution certain conditions that are being proposed. And so with that being said, in a commercial district, typically there's no setbacks. Those are subject to your landscaping, subject to your parking requirements. And again, I already spoke on the landscaping, they meet that criteria. In terms of parking, the minimum parking requirement is 24 spaces, which is being proposed on the lot. Furthermore, the use is in harmony with the comp plan. The area is surrounded by residential, multifamily to your east or your west and to the south. And you have commercial to the north and the west. So this particular area in the street itself is a collector's street minus Fireweed, it's a local street. So with collectors, it's anticipated to be a higher volume of traffic anticipated. And then furthermore, standard number three is just the general standards of the zoning code. Again, commercial district allows a variety of uses. Typically, what you are more familiar with is your retail. In this zone, commercial parking is allowed. Furthermore, auto repair is allowed in the commercial district by right. And typically, residential could be allowed in this zone, subject to conditional use, because sometimes, depending on the corridor we're looking at, you know, you don't want the Main Street of Sterling to have all these commercials and then a single-family or two-family in between with retail. And so the reason why it's conditional is to make sure is it compatible with the commercial corridor. Standard four is the use, shall so be located and arranged on the site to avoid significant noise, glare, odor, and other nuisance and dangers. So in this case, you know, I really highlight significant noise. And, you know, you have commercial to the east, and furthermore, you have ACS on the other side. And then you have Cobuck, which is Collector Street. So you do have a, it's anticipated that this area could anticipate a little bit of higher volume traffic. And so staff does not find that there's significant noise from a residential development. In typical projects that we have discussed before, typically when it comes to residential, we actually see a lower volume of traffic than you would normally see in a commercial district. And then number five, the proposed development shall not significantly impair the value of the adjoining property. So the adjoining property is commercial to the north, commercial to the east, and it's a corner lot, so it's divided by, it's separated by a street. And staff finds that six, the size and scale of the use, shall be adequately served by the existing public service. And they have water and sewer service provided there, as well as EMS nearby and police within the area. So staff finds that it meets the standard as well. And number seven, granting of the conditional use should not be harmful to the public health, safety, or welfare. Staff finds that this project meets so because right now, a vacant lot tends to attract just, you know, you know, the theory of planning is typically, a property that is built out typically has more eyes on the street. And also, this is a residential development that also brings forth family and stuff. And staff doesn't find that that's necessarily incompatible, considering the uses around it. Again, across the street is a multifamily district. There could be multifamily just literally across the street by right. They wouldn't have to go through this process. As well as to the west is another multifamily zoning district. And to the commercial, to the north and east, anything can be built that is by right within the commercial zone. So therefore, the applicant is taking that risk to build, my apologies, I'm not feeling well here, to build residential in a commercial district, knowing that there could be, you know, property to the north where it's a single-family, if it ever changed to commercial, the buffering wouldn't be required of them to the residential if this property was developed residential. So it's that risk you take when you build residential in a commercial zone, mostly if you're surrounded by it. And then lastly, this is a standard that the applicant has provided, that their current and all their sales tax, well, the existing property owner, on the city and borough certified by the Borough Finance Department. So therefore, staff finds that this project meets all those standards, with the exception that we're adding conditions based on the fire marshal's comment regarding the driveway access on Fireweed Street because, just because of the way the lot is, to ensure that they can get in and get out quickly. And so you see that first condition for this resolution is that they must provide a secondary fire apparatus off Fireweed. And either they can do a Knox box or gate, meaning they would block it off in the Knox box, meaning the fire marshal would, or the fire department would have access as needed only. So it would block off fire, access off Fireweed for just normal day-to-day commute and ingress and egress. Or, and then I'll leave that with that. And the second one is just the driveway access, making sure that they're meeting our line of sight and our triangle, that that driveway access needs to be a minimum of 30 feet from the curve at the cross street or intersection of Cobuck and Fireweed. So staff finds that this project, as presented, a 12-unit, two-story multifamily at Cobuck in a commercial district, meets the standards subject to these conditions. I'm happy to answer any other questions your commission may have for me, and I'm happy to provide any clarification on why staff didn't add any other condition as well. Thank you.
Wait, is there actually a public commentary you've opened before, staff? Would you like to open a public commentary first before you have any questions? Well, actually, before, before we move on to the public hearing, I did just want a little bit of clarification on the secondary, the secondary access requested by emergency services is, so that's the condition number one. Okay. And that would be where the snow storage is proposed?
Thank you, Chair Badla, for that question. Correct. Whereas shown as or identified as a snow storage area, a portion of that needs to consider a secondary access in that space.
Okay. Thanks, that's helpful. There will be, unless there are any other questions or comments from staff right now, we can move on to a public hearing, and there will be more time after the public hearing for commissioner comments and questions.
Ms. Chairman, it's a question for staff. Since, since the snow removal portion is adversely affected by the condition, shouldn't there be a further that all, snow remover would be off-site? Shouldn't that be part of that condition? Because we eliminated the fact that there was a place for snow.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray, for that question. So happy to elaborate on that. So yes, well, because of the second condition, correct, a portion of that snow storage would be reduced or scaled back. However, when it comes to our code, it's only clear that snow storage cannot be in two locations on the premise, is that it cannot be snowed, stored within the required parking spaces, and it cannot be stored within the required landscaping. So the applicant could put it anywhere else, but obviously, they cannot put it in a place where they're impeding or blocking the ingress and egress of that space, even to that secondary space, even if it's locked up most of the time. And if the applicant cannot do so, then it would be the burden on them to remove. However, it's not needed to be a condition because the existing code already addresses all that. So it's implied.
Okay, thank you.
Right? Any questions right now? All right, we'll move on to the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item? So yeah, come on up and please state your name for the record. Yes.
I'd be opposed to that, especially with now no snow, no, no storage on the property. Who's going to enforce the date holodeck if it's got its snow? Is that going to be the person next door that have to call it in and complain to the city that they're creating a snow burn? Because even today, you can see that it is flooded out on Fireweed, and we've had no snow issue. Normally, we have a good snow year, but you've got snow piled up every place, and it floods Fireweed halfway back from Cobuck to in front of my property, which is quite ways back. The road is high, is lower than the storage, uh, water removal as it sits. And you put more snow road on there, it's going to be even worse. And I still am opposed to the amount of people that are going to be on that piece of property, the 24 parking places demanded, and then you have visitors that are coming in and out all year round, and I'm obviously fishing pleasing. You're going to have double the amount of people over there. Where do they end up? Where do they begin to move all of their waste? Everything is imposing upon the people around them. Even the occupants of the apartment buildings don't block that many people in that place. If it was a fourplex, I don't think anybody would say anything. A 12plex, too many people, too many cars, and an awful lot of congestion on that street. We're also looking at a dirt road on Fireweed, not a paved road on Fireweed. Who maintains that? The city does, but they don't maintain it as well as they do the removal on the asphalt roads. I am totally opposed to the amount of people that are going to be living there with the amount of trash and garbage that's going to be, that's coming in. Even the owner of Trustworthy says, you know, it just brings in more, more depth into the area. He says, I put up with it every day. He has people in his store that are taking stuff two, three times a day, and especially when it's seven times. You can't control it. And you're going to bring in more lower-income housing into an area that you're trying to build up. It does not help the residents around here. I'm just opposed to the amount of people. I'm prepared to put fourplex on there, but the 12plex is way too many. And I think, and obviously, there's 10, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8 parking places. Every time they pull into their parking place, their lights are going to be right in my front room. I, my house is built, I think, 12 to 15 feet from the property line. I have large windows on that side. My fault, I obviously know that, should have known better, but there is no protection for privacy along that entire corridor of my property. It's clear path. You're not going to put any vegetation in there. It is literally, everybody in that complex looks into my house. There's no privacy at all. Therefore, my security and stuff is lost as well. So yeah, I'm totally opposed to the 12plex. Commercial property, you build a commercial building on there, they're in and out every day, but not there overnight. And it leads to a, there's no security in their home. Appreciate your comment.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this item?
It's not off of the Tucson Fireweed. She has been there approximately 23 years, and that is her home. And then I have driven South Fireweed all those years, and I've been concerned at times that my vehicle would be ruined because the road is so ready and not maintained, and it's a mess from, you know, 30 months out of the winter. From the time breakup starts till the time it ends, it's a nightmare. With that many people, it makes me real concerned for their safety. She's blind, she does not have what we have to protect ourselves. She has care providers, but are they going to feel safe? And there's actually another disabled adult in that building, and it's very concerning to me for their safety. With a lot of teenagers or young adults that will, you know, possibly be speeding on those roads, it's, it's a big concern. And then how many animals are going to be there? And are they going to come over to the property across the street? Is there any kind of animal control? So I'm very opposed to adding that large of a complex where there are vulnerable people that live there. It really makes me concerned for their safety.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this issue?
I want to go to Zoom now.
Yes. Yes, we have that. Yeah, right here. We can move to, we can move to Zoom now. That's fine. Carrie, are you wishing to speak now? If so, yeah, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yay. Yep, this, are we ready? Hello?
Carrie, you have permissions to talk, but we can't hear you at the moment.
Oh, they can't hear me? Can you hear me now? Hello?
I can hear her. I'm not sure if anyone else can.
Oh. So, okay, so stay as an attendee. Join as a panelist.
I think we do have a few more people in the audience who would like to speak, so.
Well.
Hello?
Sorry, Carrie, I will try and figure out a setting on Zoom that maybe got changed, and then we'll get back to you. But for now, we'll move on to someone in the audience. Thank you.
We won't, we won't miss you for sure. We'll have a few other folks in the chamber come on up and give their testimony. Thank you.
Hi.
My name is Randy Work. I'm a resident here in Soldatna. I am a Realtor, and I work at Reed Al Ketter Williams. Last year, 2024, I had the pleasure of being the president of ENI Realtors Association. And in our many discussions, when Linda was in ENI, many of our discussions that we had with city council was always affordable housing and the lack thereof. As you all know, housing here, the housing shortage, not only in rentals, but purchases, is really low. So the rental market here is absolutely insane. Rentals, when they are ready to rent, they rent very, very quickly. So I have rentals of my own. I have several in ENI, I have one in Soldatna. And in 12 years, I've never had a rental sit more than three days, once it's ready to rent. So the rental market here is, is very difficult to find rentals. So as to the gentleman that's going to be building this building, he is one of my clients. I've known him for several years, been involved with several projects that he has done. And he takes great pride in the quality of work that he does, and great pride in this beautiful building that he has proposed, which I believe you have all had ring rings there of. He did build a house right around the corner from this, from this project on Leager. And having driven by the property several times, the main entrance for this building is going to be on Cobuck. And Fireweed is not going to be the main entrance. And I don't really see people going all the way around to Fireweed to come on the backside of this complex. So I don't think that's really going to be an issue traffic-wise. In addition to the additional property taxes that will be coming into the borough and the city, the city rent tax revenue will be coming in, and the tenants that will be at this building will bring additional commerce to the area. And for me, I mean, that's a beautiful building that is going to certainly fit in with the area and upgrade the look of the entire area. Lastly, I would like to comment as to the quality of the tenants that we would have. We are very picky. We do not do property management at Keller Williams. However, I do help Isaiah get quality tenants that, A, will pay their rent on time, and are upstanding citizens. We do criminal background checks, we do credit checks, we do employment checks, and we do reference checks on every tenant. And believe me, I, I'm sorry, but we don't allow riffraff into our units, we just don't. So the quality of our tenants generally are young professionals, husband, wife, child. And those are the people that we do allow to be in our units. And so I feel that this 12-unit complex would be very beneficial to the neighborhood, and we will have good quality tenants involved. And, and I would be involved in that process. And once we have those good quality tenants involved, we do plan on turning the building over to a property management company that does the property management. But I would be intrically involved in picking up those tenants. Thank you for your time, and I, it would encourage you, yes, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect.
If you could wait until we have everybody else who's wanting to speak, speak, and then...
Hey, guys, can you hear me now?
Can you try again? And maybe, Tom, if you don't mind trying just to make sure it's not our end.
Can you hear me now?
We do have, we do have one other...
I can hear her.
Can you hear her?
Just give us one minute.
I can hear her. I'm not sure if you guys can hear her or not.
We can hear you too, but they can't hear us.
Okay. Yeah, if you don't mind, Carrie, we'll do one more testimony in the chamber, and then we'll, we'll try again online. Thank you for your patience. Go on.
My name is Michelle Holly, I'm a broker, realtor of Alaska Real Estate Network in the local office. To add context, Mr. Rodriguez owns the property currently, and I am a listing licensee of the tenant sale. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed 12-unit housing project in our commercial and zoning district. I believe this project is an extremely positive step forward for our community, and I urge us to reconsider its potential. First, let's look at facts. This project combines all of Soldatna's zoning regulations for commercial districts outlined in chapter 17.10 of our municipal code. It's been designed to meet building standards, parking requirements, and land use. The city's own planning staff found no legal reason to reject it. Yet at the last meeting, it was voted down 3 to 2 without explanation. Yet, based solely on neighborhood concerns. I respect those concerns, but let's weigh them against the broader good. Soldatna faces an extreme housing crisis. rents are climbing, but the inventory is nearly non-existent. This modern 12-unit project offers practical relief, affordable homes for workers, families in the near, who calls soldatna home. In a commercial district, it's a smart use of space, plenty of residential use with economic vitality. It's not a sprawling development with a modest confined addition that fits our city's growth, and is to be built by a proven local government. Later addressed... Later addressed to a recent non-comment public meeting, words prior lack of reasoning or the denial left of guessing. That's why this public comment period matters, meaning clarity in a fair and reasonable shop, projects like this. So, though this comprehensive plan calls for diversity, diverse housing, here's a chance to live with stellar, attractive answers. I've heard the opposition worries about traffic, noise, or change. These are valid feelings and I share a love for our neighborhood's character. But this project isn't a threat, it's an opportunity. The city can address any congestion and modern design can minimize noise. But zoning laws already ensure compatibility, thus this project follows. Rejecting it out of fear and nonexistent potential threats only bestows stagnation from the existing community as a whole new progress. In fact, since 1557, the motto of our town has been celebrated every July as Progress Day. I would like to point out that this subject property, along with the adjacent neighbors, sit one block from the city-proposed Riverfront Reef development. Plan in Cobuck Street is a designated feeder street to that proposed project. There will be changes in the near future. This multi-unit building will be the least of those changes. Let's build for the future, not block it. This project won't solve everything, but it's a start. One that respects our roles and meets our needs. Thank you for listening and I hope that you enjoy me supporting this step forward. I ask the board to approve this project.
Thank you. Can we move to any online comments?
Yeah. Could Tom or Carrie try and speak again? I know we heard Tom earlier, um, but it seems like something changed.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you guys hear me?
No.
Doesn't sound like they can hear us.
Um.
They can hear Carrie or Tom?
Carrie, I can try and call you through Zoom, actually.
Okay. Do you have my number? Oh.
Can, Tom, can you try call, or can you try speaking again?
Yeah, I'm trying to talk right now.
That was it? We, we can, that was the issue. Thank you. All right, Carrie, um, if you're able to, to speak, please.
Can you guys hear me?
We can, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Good job, guys. Okay, uh, are we ready?
Yes, please go ahead. Thank you for your patience.
No, no worries. Uh, it's Carrie Nelson from the study. I reside at thirty-five two hundred Rieger in Soldatna, Alaska.
Were you able to hear her?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Carrie. Thank you.
Oh, can we restart the timer? I've timed this a couple of times. Um, okay, the question that I have for you is this. Is it more important to have a 12-unit apartment for growth of our city or for the safety of approximately 100 school-aged children? My husband and I disagree with the conditional use permit for the following reasons. Number one, the additional traffic traveling up and down Cobuck, but not just traveling up and down. The congestion with that, um, of the people caught breaking to turn in and out of the complex in the existing sharp corner with possibility of forty-eight to sixty tenants, possibly mom, dad, two to three teen drivers. The complex's plan is to have 24 parking spaces. My question is, is where will the teen drivers or the summer fishing guests park? Probably the study's parking lot. Where, where will the construction vehicles park and leave their equipment when it's not being used during the construction phase? Um, number three, I have guaranteed bundle rights that are given to me as a property owner. One of these is the right of control. I'll, I will have lost my control of the amount of traffic near my property, the noise level as students try to learn, and my peace of mind for break-ins, vandalism of the building, parking area, playground would all be heightened. I don't have to remind you of the car that broke through the fence and landed in our playground. Praise God, it wasn't at recess. And the car that crashed into the power pole of our entrance. Thank God, no children were around during that time either. Uh, we have numerous events that have happened, such as intoxicated individuals in the playground and an individual watching the children from the sidewalk where the apartment building, they can see into my playground, where the police were called, and also numerous other lawless events that happened in the neighboring fourplexes. Number four, by keeping the lot commercial, it promotes local businesses, the peace of mind of store hours, quote unquote, nine to five. Um, that would, uh, keep the deterring traffic from carpet crossing my property after business hours. If there is no manager on tre, on the premises, which I heard there might be, um, who's going to watch the parking trash and upkeep? Will this, will this apartment building be beauty, beautifying the area or become an eyesore? Finally, the study's become a safe alternative for school choice for 14 years. Joel and I have worked hard to maintain the vegetation and the beauty. Um, I'd hate to see the overflow of trash from across the street blowing into the school grounds. We also do not on unwanted traffic shortcuts across the parking lot. For 14 years, I've been reminding the city drivers, the local dump trucks to not go across during dismissal time. The slogan, "Spot the tot," will not be, it'll be very hard for it to keep its integrity with the new people racing through my lot. The study is a year-round school and I'm always open to local businesses that want to use my lot for local events. Frankly, though, it frustrates me when unauthorized vehicles have parked there all night and my summer school families are arriving. Item number seven states that it should not be harmful to public safety, health, or welfare. However, various city council member already found this to be untrue. As far as safety, in the late nineteen nineties, there was a case against a man arrested for pedophilia while watching school at a local school. Why chance this by building an apartment building across from a school? Furthermore, this uncondi, or this conditional use does, uh, cause additional traffic to the school zone, individual tenants not knowing they cannot use my lot as a shortcut, endangering the safety of young children. It also encourages possible heightened drug use and alcohol near a school. As far as welfare goes, unfortunately, my welfare will be compromised if parents or future parents see the above concerns as valid and I lose enrollment. I'm the sole owner. However, it is not just me impacted if this zone is changed. It is all the families that attend the study. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, um, in the public who wishes to make a comment on this item? Yeah, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Isaiah Rudolph. I am the one that's looking to build a 12-unit apartment building here in four hundred Cobuck. Um, I've kind of went over all the commission's reasons for the, after the first meeting why they denied it. So I just come wanted to address the issues that brought forth. So, I mean, for the first one, it was, um, about the snow removal and/or snow storage. The way I have the site plan set up right now, um, on the original one, I just had, didn't have the fire apparatus. As the fire marshal presented, I needed one. I didn't update the site plan at that time, but if you look at the rendering, the 3D rendering, I had that one revised and put in that secondary access, which would be blocked off by a fence with an OX box. So that entrance would not be used at all. So south fireweed would not be used for this property in any, at all. I, it will be all off of Cobuck. So anybody that lives by South Cobuck shouldn't have, sorry, south fireweed. Won't have any traffic going through as far as I, as far as I am concerned, so. Um, and for storage of snow, um, the way it's designed on the site plan, I have actually 26 spaces for parking, not 24. And I didn't include it in the original site plan because I was going to use more sto, snow storage there. But for those two extra spots, I would include that as my initial snow storage. If there is any excess snow that does accumulate, unlike this year. Um, I already spoke to the guy that I work with for snow plowage from other properties. And he said removing the snow is not an issue at all. He does it for his other clients at this point, at this point, so he can easily do that. For the concern about out exterior storage and for any stuff that the tenants might have, I do have, I redesigned the interior layout of the units. And I have a three by five, three and a half foot by five foot interior storage for each unit right by their front door. Um, I believe one of the plans showed it there, so. Um, I know one of the commission's concerns was to provide like a six racks for bikes just to, in case somebody does have a bicycle, they don't want to bring them upstairs for the second story units. Um, I have no issues with that. I can provide that just in case if somebody only has one vehicle, likes to, works in town, drive a bicycle. That's great. I'm, I'm for that. Um, as far as the privacy for the northern property, um, I will be putting up a fence. I was planning on doing that originally regardless. On the 3D rendering, um, it shows a white brick wall. Um, the guy just put it in there. I didn't specify. I just told him to put a privacy wall at least six feet high visually blocking. So any headlights of, all those parking spaces would be completely blocked. In addition to any noise, that fence would be mitigating all that. I'm not sure if there's anything else. I mean, I would, I would love the chance to address any other concerns the commission might have. Um, and if not, then, no, thank you.
Yeah, if you could stay for questions, um, actually, unless there is any, um, additional people who, is there anyone in addition who would like to speak? Who hasn't spoken on this item? I think that you're the last one. So if you wouldn't mind sitting for questions from commissioners. Um, with that, the public comment period is now closed. Um, and we can, um, go to commissioner comments.
Madam Chair, I had a question for the applicant. It's been mentioned that there would be low-income tenants. I assume that this is a market rent project. So could you, would you make available rental units through Alaska Housing Finance, which would then therefore be someone that would be assisted to be renting there? Or how, how would you propose that the renters would be chosen?
Um, I am not honestly super familiar with the whole process of that. So I have a property manager that does the actual screening and finding the tenants and vetting everybody finding out how they would, I guess, pay their occupants and their jobs and how they make money and all that. So I'm, I guess I'm not sure what programs there are for low income. Um, I'm not sure what actual number is low-income housing or high. I mean, whatever the current market is, that's kind of where we will be. Um, trying to compete with the other apartments in town as well. So I, I don't see it as being too crazy expensive or being the cheapest ones in town, either being a new fast eight apartment building, so.
Thank you.
Are there any other commissioner comments or questions for the applicant? Um, I was, I just had a question, um, but which I think that you just answered with the, by describing the privacy fence and like the thickness and height for actually blocking headlights. Um, but I was going to ask if it would be, um, but at the last meeting, we talked a lot about, uh, the pros and cons of having 24 spaces or having fewer spaces so that there would be less, um, less car noise and, and movement. Um, would it be at all of interest to remove the parking spaces along that neighboring line, the seven spaces? Um, uh, ostensibly, there will be some tenants who only have one vehicle per, um, or, and I, you know, like you said, if they're right in town and they just need to walk or bike. Um, and then that would be, I guess, a pro in some ways, but a detriment in others. Is that at all something that you would consider? Oh, yeah, go for it.
My apologies to interrupt, Madam Chair. So if what you're proposing is potentially to reduce the number of parking for this, then they would need to request for a waiver or a variance in the parking reduction. So that would bring a different, we would have to bring a variance concurrently because without that variance, we can't reduce the parking, so. But you can continue on. I just want to be clear on that.
Yeah.
Uh, either way, I'm not opposed to reducing the parking. I, I would like to have 24 just because I, I know most people have two vehicles. Um, I mean, I would like the snow storage and obviously it would, um, less headlight glare. But with the privacy fence, there won't be any headlights going into the property regardless, so. Yeah, e- either way, for me, like I said, I just like the way the 3D rendering is the newest one that I have made for the actual site plan as of right now. So that's, um, what I'm going to be going with.
Yeah. Yeah, and I realize that this is, this is a bit of a sticky question. Um, it's a, it's a topic that the commission and, um, the city has considered before, whether or not, um, we actually do want more parking or whether we want fewer spaces. And so, um, for simplicity's sake, if, if, if we're all good with 24, then I think we should just keep it at this point and revisit amending our parking requirements later. So. I'm seeing nods. Um, are there any other questions or comments for the applicant?
Commissioner Burton. Thank you for addressing the reasons for the denial from the, um, last meeting. Um, so of, for my clarity, since snow storage was, you know, a big issue for the, to provide a spot for that secondary access on south fireweed, are, are you saying that, um, you are going to contract some individual to remove that snow from that property? Because you said you had, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, that you had originally intended for 26 parking spaces? And, uh, I'm thinking two of those spaces would be utilized for that snow storage. But, uh, from the original site, you know, obviously the snow storages for that secondary access is. So just for my clarity, uh, are you proposing that you're going to hire somebody out each time uh, you're accumulating snow to remove it from the property?
Uh, yes, so, um, as this rendering shows right there on the bottom left next to number seventeen parking space, though I just did not include an additional two just because I didn't need them.
I see.
Um, but in the 3D rendering, um, I did include them just to fill in the space. And for summertime, if anybody has a guest show up, there will be two guest parking spots during the entire summer. And that spot is twenty by twenty a square, I guess, since the parking are ten by twenty. Um, but yeah, so whenever there's a small snowfall, there will be enough space there to store it. And the same contractor, who, snow removal would bring in a skid steer and a dump trailer and remove the snow, which he already, like I said, does for other people and has a dump site already set up.
Okay. And, uh, I appreciate you addressing the, the buffer on the north end because that's obviously a concern of the neighboring property owner. And, uh, as you said, you're proposing a six-foot, uh, tall fence in that area. So that's the brick fence you were talking about, but it's.
Yeah, it would, it would probably be taller than that. And, um, it's probably not going to be a white brick wall, um, but it would be a solid fence, either made out of wood or, um, there's many different kinds out there, but yeah, it would be a solid fence for sure.
Uh, and I do have a clarifying question that's probably directed for staff that addresses some of the concerns, um, about summer, uh, traffic and, you know, fishing, big fishing town and, uh, where that fishing waste, we obviously have a place for that in the municipal dump. But for, for my clarity, uh, do we have any municipal codes that prohibit any fish carcasses being stored in the dumpsters in residential areas?
Yeah. Thank you, Vice Chair Burton, for that question. Yes, we have our public nuisance code, which would address excessive garbage, refuse, and carcasses. So if that becomes a problematic thing, you know, we usually get a call regarding that and we will address it through code enforcement.
Um, yeah, we should, there's a couple of questions and, um. Yeah, are there any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, Commissioner Anderson.
Oh, yeah, I need you to, sorry, that was actually for the commissioners, but yeah, um, if you don't mind. We actually have to have it recorded. I'm so sorry. This is a little bit awkward, but if you could relinquish your chair for a moment and just speak into the microphone so, because it's, um, has to be recorded. Thank you so much.
Builder and his real estate agents are stating that they're building this because there's lack of housing in the area, affordable housing. But yet they're also stating that they don't know that they're going to do Alaska housing finance, not financing, but subsidized housing. That's where we're lacking in, in the apartments and housing is the low-end housing for the community. So they're saying in one hand, we're building it for a high-end income, but we're going to give it affordable housing. You can't do it both on one hand. Alaska housing, if you are, um, didn't. Alaska Housing, if you are denying Alaska Housing subsidized housing there, then I don't, I don't know whether that goes against the law or not. But virtually, that's what the properties around there are being built for, is low-end housing. You even have the single-family housing there that is built by owner builder and they subsidize the cost of the housing because they're putting the labor in themselves. What is to keep low-end out of this particular unit?
Thank you.
Nobody.
Thank you.
And when you sell it or hand it over to somebody else, who's going to enforce removing the snow removal? Goes into a contract that nobody looks at. Nobody can enforce the laws on it because you have to call the city. The city comes out and says, you've got to remove it, and then they get around to it whenever they get around to it. So, no, I'm still opposed to it.
Thank you.
And then you have, and then you have the mound of snow on the corner from Fireweed onto Cobuck, which is a really, a really bad area to get on to as it is. It's right across the street from the entrance to the school.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, I can have your chair back, and sorry if you wanted, we had a spot for you up here. So I just think there's probably going to be some more questions for you.
Yeah, as far as low-income housing and all that, I know the opposing party is, keeps mentioning that they don't want low-income housing kind of people there. They don't want, you know, people that are going to be loitering or walking around and going to their properties or doing all this kind of stuff. And usually, once higher-end tenants and higher rents in general will just promote just better, I would, more upstanding citizens that wouldn't do all this stuff that they're concerned about. So they want this and that as well. So they want low, they want to push this, but it seems like they're going back and forth on that part too. So on, I forgot her second, second question, sorry.
No, it's okay, I was actually asking if there are any other commissioner comments or questions for the applicant. Go ahead, Commissioner Turner.
Commissioner Turner, what kind of rent are you going to be asking for, say, the two-bedroom?
It would be somewhere in the $1,600 per month.
Does that include any utilities?
That would most likely include water and sewer.
All right, yeah, I see your hand raised, Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah, can you hear me? Hello?
Let us toggle.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
There we go. Yeah, a question for Mr. Rutov. There's actually the, the amount you were going to charge, if you happen to know, but that just got answered. But my second question was on the property manager, is that somebody that's in-state or local? Or is this somebody outside the state? Are they actually going to meet with the people? Or you said they were going to conduct all the interviews and do all that, the background checks or whatever. I was curious if you were going to have any hand in that whatsoever or just farm it out? And then if you were to, I was just curious if they were local.
Yes, so currently, like Sir Randy Work mentioned, he would be do the initial, filling up all the units and he would do all that stuff. And then later handing it over to, yes, a, a local property management company here. That would be in Solotna or, I'm not sure the exact office area, but yeah, they would be readily available and probably be passing by the property many times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, does the, do the commissioners have any other questions for applicant? All right, thank you.
I appreciate you addressing my, my concerns originally, which had to do with the snow storage. It was explained that although it is required for the site plan to show where you have existing or proposed snow storage, it's not actually required that you have it as long as you haul it away. So there's no condition to put on that, that's just either you're in violation or you're not. And then my other concerns with the privacy of the neighbor is addressed by that fence, which I think that, that I think that we should consider putting a condition on that in that way. And then the adding, adding the bike storage, I think, I think will be beneficial. And also that you actually changed your plan to provide some storage for your units is also super helpful, so I appreciate that.
This isn't, not meant to be nitpicky, but I did notice on very beautiful renderings that you had some landscaping buffer behind the, the refuse, the dumpsters. Is that relatively accurate? Or I would like there to be some landscape buffering behind the dumpsters. And so that's maybe something additional that the commission could consider adding as a condition, but it looked adequate from the pictures.
Yeah, as far as, I guess, what I need for landscaping, it would be going alongside that whole property line. And I was also thinking about putting fencing in where the dumpsters would be, wherever the fence is going through. I would also box in the area of the dumpster, so you, there wouldn't be visually, you won't be able to see them off the street, unless you're directly in front of them.
Thank you. All right, are there any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you so much for your time and for answering our questions.
Thank you.
Are there any commission comments or questions for staff or just comments to make in general? Additional conditions to add? We can discuss all of them.
Are we at the point where we want, want to suggest, okay? I would like to propose that we add a condition as follows. Provide a minimum of a solid opaque privacy fence or wall at least six feet in height along the north property line between the parking spaces and the adjacent property. The fence or wall must be constructed of durable materials such as wood, vinyl, masonry, or precast concrete. Any damage to the fence or wall that compromises its privacy and screening function between the subject property and the adjacent property to the north must be repaired or replaced.
It is, but the public comment period is closed, thank you.
Madam Chair, was that a motion to amend?
Yeah, that was.
That was to add a condition, I think, I don't know if I worded it right.
A move to.
Move to add.
Yeah.
A condition.
And so you can have a second.
I'd second.
Thank you. And if there's any commissioner who wishes to, like, this is the time where we could talk about having it only be precast concrete or only brick if we wanted to have a thickness there. But I think it's nice to give a little bit of flexibility to the applicant.
Yeah. There is wording in there about what would be acceptable, but do we have a list of acceptable? Is there somewhere already in the code? I know we've done this for buffering of storage areas before. Just making sure that we're like in line with what we've said previously. Because this, this doesn't include chain link fence, which we want to make sure that it's not. And I think that's already covered in code.
Yeah.
So, thank you for that question, Commissioner Smithwick-Ale. So in regards to consistency, I think the code was changed recently to say an eight-foot fence, decorative fence. So I think here, you know, you can choose to be more customized to this particular project. I don't think that particular screening applies to this project, it's up to your discretion.
As a condition, I think, I mean, I'm fine with the six feet. It was more the, what the fence is made of. As long as we, I like the way this is worded, but the rest of the commission can comment on that as well.
And it does span the whole width of that entire side of the property.
Yeah, the, the property line?
Yeah.
This, yeah, the way that, the way that I have it, it just says the, right.
Is that what you wish, that was the intent?
I think, well, yeah, the intent was to protect the neighboring.
Yeah.
Use, which is commercial property being used residentially.
Yeah.
To protect that property from the headlights.
Yep.
Any other commissioners wish to comment or change?
So we're, you're, we're leaving it just in front of the parking? Am I understanding that correctly, just in front of the parking areas, the six-foot?
Unless we want to make a change to it, that's the way that I read it.
I can provide some clarity. As written, it's really to address the concern that was expressed by the neighbor in regards to the headlight screening. So when I drafted this condition for Commissioner Smithwick-Ale, I particularly just highlighted the whole parking lot. Again, this is residential to residential, it's, yes, it's a higher-density residential. It is up to your commission if you want it to be the entire length. However, the way it is written is really, you know, we're saying the minimum is that they need to provide a fence or a wall between where the parking spaces are to the adjacent property to the north.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think, I think the applicant indicated he was going to put the fence in front of the dumpsters. So that, in a sense, expands that same principle. I, I think in terms of, of privacy, having the fence go along the entire property line from the street to the end of the, end of the, as in east end of the property probably makes the most sense, again, for the compatibility of the, the adjacent neighbor. So I would offer a friendly amendment that the fence go from, you know, from the property line along the north side, the entire length of the property. That's a friendly amendment, Jenny, then you can just say yes.
Yes. We don't have to vote twice. No, thank you. Yeah, with the friendly amendment, we can just vote on your original condition. So this would, if there, are there any other questions or comments about Jenny's condition? This would be a vote on the condition. See none, we can vote to add this as a condition.
A vote to amend the resolution to add the condition. Murray?
Yes.
Smithwick-Ale?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Chair Badla?
Yes.
With six yes votes, zero no votes, the motion to amend the resolution passes.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioners who wish to make amendments or add conditions for this project?
We had one more drafted as a condition for the storage of the bicycles prior to a certificate. Or, let's see, I propose to.
A move to add.
A move to add a condition as follows. Prior to a certificate of occupancy, provide bike racks for at least six bicycles on the property for the tenants.
Any questions or changes?
Somebody put, they put some bike racks, like at the brewery, it says Soldatna Keen Eye. They're very nice. That might be a consideration, but one of those, a couple of those.
Does anyone know where those came from, while we're discussing?
Yeah, I do, I can, I can tell you about sourcing if you want. There's a Keen Eye high school graduate who welds those and is a young entrepreneur. And it's a pretty neat project.
All right, any other questions before we vote on whether to add this as a condition? I'll just make a comment that with, you know, this might help to, you know, being so close to town, it's nice to give people access to riding bikes and, you know, kids having bicycles and not having to carry them up the stairs. I think this would be a really nice, nice asset too, especially to an apartment complex, so. Right, can we call for the vote?
A vote on the motion to amend for Jenny's bike rack condition. Burton?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Smithwick-Ale?
Yes.
Chair Badla?
Yes.
With six yes votes, zero no votes, the motion to amend the resolution passes.
Do commissioners have any additional conditions to add?
Commissioner Burton, just a question, once again, for my clarification. Can you describe what the permissible materials allowed for that six-foot barrier that runs along the north end of the property that we just passed, what's?
Can I just read the condition?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll read, I'll read it again. Provide a minimum of a solid opaque privacy fence or wall at least six feet in height along the north property line. And then we're leaving out this part about, because it's the whole property line. The fence or wall must be constructed of durable materials such as wood, vinyl, masonry, or precast concrete. And then any damage would need to be repaired. That's the end of it.
So that's our range, all right.
Yep.
Do you have any comments that you'd like to add regarding that? Does that satisfy?
It, it, it does. I, you know, I think there needs to be a barrier in this case. And I want to ensure when we're talking about opacity, that can mean a lot of things. Want to make sure that does not include chain link fence with, you know, slots in there. So I think that's an important distinction there.
Yeah, I don't want to add this as a requiring condition, but I, I am in favor of cast concrete or brick. But I know that that's more expensive, but I think it would really elevate the look and accompany the beautiful building really well, so. Are there any other comments or that the commissioners wish to make before we cast our vote? Or conditions to add?
I would just say that the, the concerns with safety, there's a lot of speculation about who is going to live there. And I do think that this neighborhood, I think that this housing unit fits in this neighborhood. There are several other four-plexes. Like you mentioned, the rural cap housing is right there. And it is not actually low-income housing, so people that pay their bills and can afford to live there are going to be living there. So I just thank you for addressing that. But I don't want you to feel like we're not concerned with the safety, because, but I do feel like, I, I feel like it is a, a project that isn't, I don't feel like it will be unsafe for the neighborhood.
Commissioner Anderson here. Yeah, I wanted to second what Jenny was just saying. I think that this new, nicer complex will potentially some, maybe more well-off tenants in other lower-income areas, older areas, are maybe going to vacate those to move into these, which would free up the truly lower-income areas. I think that the tenants that are going to be in here are going to be more well-off and established, older. Who can't afford these, it sounds like 1,600 bucks is, is a pretty good amount. But I don't know, I, I did hear everything that public said. I live right down the road off Rieger, so I am a neighbor to this as well. And I appreciate all the public comment, especially with the school right there.
Any other comments or questions for staff or comments to the other commissioners? I think we're ready to call for the vote.
Perfect. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smithwick-Ale?
Yes.
Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Burner? Burton, sorry, Burton? Burton, sorry, Burton.
Yes.
Commissioner, or Chair Badla?
Yes.
With six yes votes and zero no votes, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, public comments without prior notice? This is the time if, sorry for the formality, um, but this is the time. If you have any additional comments without prior notice, if you'd like to make additional comments, you can do so now. Yeah, and it doesn't have to be on the project. Any, any public comment on any item? What is it, not on?
Thank you. Good evening, thank you again. Um, I was speaking with Scott, uh, the maintenance, the head of maintenance. I don't know his last name, wonderful gentleman.
Streets and Maintenance.
Asking him about, uh, that particular portion of, of road there behind the project that we've been discussing. He's well aware that there's a dip in that road, and he's stepped up to the plate and said they're gonna take care of it, and it's nothing to worry about, and that he'd be talking to you all about that. And so I just wanted to leave that on the table. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yeah, I was curious also if there was, um, if there was, if it was scheduled for paving, or if it was just.
Uh, I just wanna address real quickly the, I think there was a little bit of confusion between low-income housing and affordable housing. Um, these units are affordable housing, and they are eligible for Alaska Housing Finance subsidiaries. So several of my units that I have are subsidized by Alaska Housing Finance Corporation, um, and it's actually a great program, and they will be one of the first people that I notify uh, once this project is complete and ready for occupancy, um, to interview, um, those applicants. And we do interview them. And, uh, if they are not qualified to be in the units, uh, either income-wise or any other reason why, um, then they will not. So, so if you're, this is my wheelhouse, and this is what I do. And, um, so if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anybody in the chamber or online who wishes to make any comment, um, please feel free to do so now. Right, um, moving on, uh, there are no informational items, but, um, we do have some, uh, reports, and I'm happy to have Councilmember Chilson with us.
Thank you, Chair Badla. Since, uh, we haven't had the opportunity to convene as a city council since our last planning and zoning commission meeting, I have no further information to bring forward to the commission. However, I'd be happy to stand for any questions that any of the commissioners might throw my way regarding activities on the council.
Yeah, Jordan, there's a, the property just up the street from this project, they started clearing lot in there. Do you know what that's for?
I haven't heard anything about further development to that since the, um, the rezone had failed before the council.
I think this is not part of that, that request.
Not part of that same property?
You know, there's just one single house there. It's, if you're looking at the house, it's to the right.
I apologize, I don't have any information on that, but I might defer that to city staff or administration if there's any knowledge they might be able to share on that one.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner. I think further along the road, as you're heading west off Cobak in a corner, before you hit that property as a rezone, there are three lots. They're being proposed duplexes on each lot, so there are three lots under the same ownership. Duplexes.
Duplexes.
On each lot. Correct. Yes, 'cause those are, I believe, single-family, two-family zone right there. So everything is by right development.
Thank you for that update.
Yeah, well, thanks for being here. Um, City Manager Bauer, thanks for being here too. Do you have anything to report or share with us?
The only thing that, um, you had asked about fireweed and paving, um, it is on our capital improvement plan, but there is not funding at this time for completing that project.
Is it like?
Maybe at some point. It's a five-year plan, so maybe at some point.
Yeah, thank you. And, uh, Councilmember Hutchings, would you like to make any comment or report anything? Thanks for being here tonight.
Well, the only comment that I would like to make is thank you for passing this, because we do need housing. I have employees that are looking for rentals all the time, and we just, they can't find them. I mean, they're having to go out to Funny River, and then they're having to go at the end of, you know, some of them even drive from Nikiski. It's ridiculous how far they have to go out. So I'm really excited about this project, and I think it fits in with the fact that we've been trying to make these changes in the city so that we have the opportunity to bring these housing units in. And just a point that I did wanna make, I have seen the units that have been built by Mr. Rutov in Kenai, and they are lovely units. So I think that it'll be a, a real addition, and besides which, I would imagine there'll be more pizza purchased over at Pizza Boys and coffee at Coladas, and, there you go. So I, I'm just really happy to see this pass, so thank you so much.
Thank you for, thank you for being here. Director Mitchell?
I will keep it short, I don't really have too much, but I appreciate the questions and discussion tonight, and I apologize during that presentation, I just was not feeling well, so sorry if I seem a little shaky. Other than that, um, just wanna bring forth that the next meeting is canceled, so hopefully. And then just, we'll have a work session in May, so, um, and I will be out of the office that week. Other than that, thank you.
And the work session will be, um, before, beforehand?
Correct, at three-thirty. So again, the city.
May seventh.
May seventh. So your work session will start at three-thirty and followed by the public hearing, and dinner will be provided for that long meeting.
All right, thank you. Um, I'll just go down, down the line for commissioner comments. Uh, Commissioner Turner, would you start us off?
So that's May seventh for the work session, 'cause I.
Yep, yeah, May seventh will be our regular meeting and, um, a three-thirty work session prior on Wednesday, May seventh. And the public is welcome to all of those. Um, we love it when people come and help us make better decisions, and we appreciate everybody's comments and, um, yeah. Commissioner Turner?
I'm just checking the date on that, May seventh?
Oh, yes.
Three-thirty. Okay, no other comments, thank you.
Commissioner Smithwick-Ale?
I'd just say, it interests me to continue discussion about things that come up like this, where, um, we don't have anything in multifamily housing about providing storage for, um, anything that might wanna be kept outside. And, uh, the, let's see, there was one other thing. Anyway, the, oh, the parking, yeah, was the parking, like, do we, do we want to use up every square inch of a piece of property? Um, or are there things that we can continue to do? Especially as we want to encourage more housing, uh, more use of the land in that way, and then just trying to figure out how to make that happen in a way that, that works well, so.
Yeah, especially in a, right, downtown, maybe in a downtown corridor, we could, we could really, um, lower the requirements for parking so that we could encourage people to bike or walk, you know? And I know that it's like, oh, it's Alaska, they can't do that in the wintertime, but, um, you know, there's lots of cities who prioritize sidewalk, uh, snow clearing removal first. Um, there's lots of ways, the bikes and shoes and everything, and see a lot of people do it, um, more and more. So it's something to consider for sure, as we, I don't think we've really had a bunch of housing downtown, and as we move toward wanting that mixed use, um, I think, yeah, it'd be good to look at that. So, I guess that's my comment, and, uh, moving to you, Commissioner Burton.
I just wanna say that I'm, I'm glad the commission reconsidered this resolution. Housing is an issue, obviously, and, uh, the first meeting, uh, or the first time this was up, uh, the reasons for denial, uh, came a little later. Uh, however, I'm, I'm glad, uh, uh, the party applicant was able to address a lot of those issues, and glad we were able to come together and discuss this in a more robust fashion and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Commissioner Murray?
I just think it's, um, as Councilwoman Hutchings said, I think that, you know, we've been talking housing for a very long time, and we've been stymied by a lot of circumstances. And, you know, nothing's perfect, but I think that it is, I mean, certainly the rendering is beautiful. Let's hope that the outcome is the same.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just, I really appreciate all the public comment and everyone who showed up today, and even if you agree or disagree on how things went, it's, you're a part of this, uh, community, and I, and I really appreciate it. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder that, um, our April meeting is canceled. The next regular meeting will be Wednesday, May seventh, at five-thirty PM with a work session prior at three-thirty. Three-thirty, three-thirty. All right, with that, um, our meeting is adjourned.